I was reading the article.
I haven't seen many students here this year.
Is it vacation? It's too early in the semester.
Good evening. Welcome to the Marquette City Commission meeting for Tuesday, October 11th, 2011. Could you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, could you please call roll?
Yes, Your Honor, Mayor Protam de Petro.
Here.
Commissioner Neme.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Stenange.
Here.
Commissioner Snyder.
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Here.
And Mayor Kivala.
Here. Do we have any agenda changes? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Commissioner Ryan?
I'll move we approve the agenda.
Or Commissioner De Petro supports. All in favor, say yes.
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 Posed. Motion carries. First up is announcements, and I'm going to call Assistant City Manager Carl Zugger to the lectern to just give us a little update on a check presentation we had yesterday.
Thank you, Your Honor and Commissioners. Yesterday, we had a representative from the Koch Organization in town to present the city of Marquette with a check for $20,000. This is through the Sprite Spark Park Grant Program. The city of Marquette was chosen as one of 20 communities throughout the entire United States to be a recipient of the dollars. These dollars will be used at the Shivers Hills Park to renovate not only the basketball court, but other things in that park as well. So it's a great project for the city. It's something that we will anticipate pursuing in the spring. And congratulations to you, Mayor and the city of Marquette.
All right. Our first agenda item is a public hearing regarding moped helmet ordinance 588. City Clerk, do you want to read the background?
Yes, Your Honor. As a result of the recent recodification effort, it was determined that a clerical oversight was made in 2005 that inadvertently omitted the moped helmet requirement from the city code. Following a review, excuse me, following a review by the city attorney, it was determined that in order for the police department to enforce the helmet requirement, a new ordinance would have to be adopted and codified. Attached draft ordinance number 588 would require operators of mopeds to wear helmets and allow the police department to enforce this requirement. The commission reviewed this at their meeting of September 26, 2011, and scheduled a public hearing for this evening. Fiscal effect, nominal revenue may be collected as part of the enforcement of this ordinance. Recommendation, following the public hearing, consider input from the public on ordinance number 588, an ordinance to require operators of mopeds to wear helmets. If adopted, authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the ordinance, alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone that wishes to address the commission on this issue, please stand at the lectern and give your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to address the commission? Anyone? All right, seeing no takers, Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we adopt ordinance number 588, which requires operators of mopeds to wear helmets and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the ordinance on behalf of the city.
All right. Do we have a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Neme, any comments?
Well, I think it was left out as an oversight, and certainly I think it's a good idea for operators of mopeds to wear helmets because it only serves their own benefit.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Only that is correcting an administrative oversight.
All right. Any additional comments? Seeing none, City Clerk, could you please do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Your Honor, Mayor Protam de Petro.
Yes.
Commissioner Neme.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan.
Yes.
Commissioner Stenange.
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder.
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Yes.
And Mayor Kivala.
Yes. Motion carries. All right. Next up, we've got a presentation on Founder's Landing Building Heights by City Planner Dave Stensis. Dave, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Dave Stensis. I'm planner in the Community Development Department. Several members of the Planning Commission have joined us here this evening as well. And Chairman Degouche will be available to answer any questions that might be best answered by the Planning Commission during the public part of this presentation, or public part of this meeting, sorry. Presentation I've prepared at your request is a brief synopsis of what has transpired with the construction of buildings in the landing planned unit development between Lakeshore Boulevard and Front Street. And this hopefully will clarify many of the questions that have been raised regarding this project. We're going to start with a project decision timeline. This will describe each decision that was made according to city ordinances by either the Planning Commission or the City Commission for this PUD project. On January 6, 2009, the preliminary plan for this was reviewed by the Planning Commission. And as I say, prior to this, the city put out a request for proposals to develop this parcel of Founder's Landing. On the 26th of January, 2009, the preliminary planned unit development was approved by the City Commission. That sets the stage for everything that comes after. That made the project an official project. The city approved. On April 4, 2009, the final site plan for this project was approved by the Planning Commission. A little over a year later, May 4, 2010, there was an amendment to the planned unit development approved by the Planning Commission. In December of last year, another amendment was approved by the Planning Commission. And this year, on the 3rd of March, a minor amendment was approved by staff for Ripley Building upon a Planning Commission finding that requested the requested modifications to the project were minor in nature. This matrix shows the same decision timeline in the column at the left with each building's height just called out. And we're not going to get into this in detail right now, but this is where I'm going to explain how we got to this through the following slides. And we'll come back to this. First, I want to explain how a project like this is reviewed by city staff and the Planning Commission, the City Commission. When we have a request for proposals, as we did with this project, the first thing the city's going to get back from interested developers are conceptual plans. And these plans will show relative heights of buildings. They're not showing anything specific, no specific bulk dimensions. And these are actual pictures from the concept plan that was submitted by the developers of this project. That was in late 2008. Next, when that concept plan is approved, the PUD is approved, and we go to the next step, site plans, specific bulk dimensions are noted, are called out on the site plan. This is what we look at to make sure that the ordinances the city's approved are being followed. And you can see on this slide, this shows some actual renderings from both the preliminary site plan on the right and the final site plans for one of the buildings on the left. And finally, after the building is built, we'll get a plan, a schematic, showing the actual dimensions of the building in space as it's built, when it's complete. This was one recently received for the Kabagum Building. Another issue that's been brought up many times is the grading elevations. This is a call out from one of the preliminary site plans for the grading of the site. Inside of the red circles or ovals, you'll see very small numbers. This is the elevation above sea level. So we have here 630 feet and 630.5 generally right in that dimensional realm across the site. And on this particular project, the preliminary grading plan specified that there would be 12 inches of engineered, plus or minus, of engineered granular well-draining fill applied to the site. So now we're going to get back to the city, or the commission actions by date. So we're going to start back with when the preliminary site plan was submitted to the Planning Commission. The request was for parcel one of Founder's Landing. The action taken at that meeting was the Planning Commission recommended approval with the following conditions. One, units are to be owner-occupied. Two, clarification of public sidewalk maintenance was to be made. Three, the owners responsible for reconstruction of encroachments. Four, as-built survey was going to be required. And five, building materials as shown on the plans. The ground elevation noted in column four was 630.5 feet. With that notation, we talked about earlier, 12 inches plus or minus granular fill needed on the site. At this point, the Kabagum Building was shown to be 26 feet zero inches high with a 38-inch tower. And the building height is the height of either the flat roof, if it's a mansard roof, or the middle of the roof line if it's a gable roof. So that's why we have these two different dimensions here. And that's what the building height is. So Barriga Building, 31 feet. Ripley Building, 44 feet. Everett Building, 44 feet. Gaines Building, 47, 46 feet six inches. And Adams Building, the same, 46 feet six inches. And both of those buildings having a 59-foot eight-inch tower. This is exactly what was approved by the City Commission on the 26th of January, 2009. The final site plan approval by the Planning Commission had other recommendations attached to that approval, or conditions attached to that approval, or is a recommendation for approval, I'm sorry. One, storm sewer was to be maintained by the private developer. No utility construction until approved by the city engineering department. Three, the master deed was to be recorded, created and recorded. Four, building materials as presented, no vinyl to be used for building exterior materials. Ground height, 630.5 to 632, that was the range given. Building heights, 32 feet for Kabagum, 40 with the tower, 37 feet six inches for Barriga. Ripley at 51, Everett at 51, Gaines at 55 with a 60-foot nine-inch tower, and Adams at 60-foot six inches midpoint of the peak and a 60-foot nine-inch tower. On May 4, 2010, amendment was received for that. The Planning Commission approved it as a minor amendment. We had the same ground heights approved, 630 and a half feet, 632 feet. Building heights there, 30 feet for Kabagum, 40 feet for the tower, 30 feet eight inches for Barriga, 39 feet five inches for Ripley, 39 feet five inches for Everett, and Gaines and Adams remained as previously approved. December 21, 2010, another amendment. The Planning Commission approved it as a minor amendment with the condition that staff may approve any future height changes within a tolerance of plus or minus two feet. Same ground heights. Buildings were 40-foot nine inches for Ripley, 40-foot nine for Everett. Gaines and Adams remained the same. And finally, the last decision made by city was March 3, 2011. It was an amendment to the Ripley Building. This was a staff, a minor amendment, zoning compliance approval in accordance with that previous decision by the Planning Commission that staff could make these changes. And that saw the height of the Ripley Building change to 42 feet seven inches, and Everett and Gaines and Adams remained as previously approved. Which brings us back to here. Now you can look down on each building and see the changes over time with the different decisions that were made. In general, the heights of these buildings are lower after the final decisions were made. Kabagum is a little bit higher. The Barriga Building is a little bit lower. The Ripley Building, as of March 3, 2011, is a bit lower. The Everett Building is a bit lower. And we see a little height gain on the towers of Gaines and Adams. And the building height of Gaines and Adams did grow a bit, but that was within the approved range of the plans that were submitted. And the ground elevation has remained consistent throughout. So that's my brief presentation. I have more slides that discuss the particular views and elevations above Front Street and the view corridors, if you'd like to see those, or we can save that for another time. It's your pleasure.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for City Planner, Don?
I think one of the critical questions is, did that ground elevation change anywhere in the process? Is this what we anticipated, that it would be built at the level it is being built?
Yes. Initially, when the site was a brownfield and was being remediated, I believe there was about four feet of fill that was taken out, replaced. And right from the preliminary plan, this said 630.5 feet, plus or minus 12 inches. There's been 18 inches added at some points on this, but that is still within the range of a reasonable change to the, or if it was four feet, that would be a much different story. But 12 plus or minus was approved, and it's been right in that range with every building here.
And you weren't here, so I guess it would be difficult. But there seems to be some kind of disconnect between what people anticipated and what arrived. And I'm not saying, you know, I'm not saying anybody's wrong or right or anything else. I'm just saying that there is that feeling. Is there any explanation from that, from the Planning Commission?
I don't see it myself. When everything was on the plans, everything we just went through is called out on those plans. And we can go back to the heights shown here on the preliminary plan. That's the preliminary plan showing the heights at what they're right in where they are now.
And that was?
For the Gaines Building.
And that was put together when? What was the date on that?
That was? January 2009. And again, the Gaines Building said 47 feet with a 59-foot tower. And that does have a 60-foot nine-inch tower now planned. But the other buildings, as you can see, that was a bad example because that building's not there. But the other buildings, I mean, we see Everett higher, but that was on the plans that were approved. Those were decisions that were made in public in the light of day.
Ma'am, ma'am, please. Any other questions? Do we, Commissioner Stonehouse?
Question, Dave. All of the meetings of the Planning Commission, I'm assuming were open to the public. And was there public participation within those meetings discussing the plans at all?
I think I'd like to have Chairman Degouche come speak to that.
Please, Steve, if you could.
He's been through this process all the way through.
Hi. You may recall, prior to these dates, there was a proposal, well, actually, there were a number of things happening back in that history of the various projects that have come before. One involved the Form-Based Code project where the city won a national competition. And we procured funding to develop the Form-Based Code for the downtown waterfront area. The then-city commission opted to cut out Founder's Landing from the development of that code when it was announced that we had won that grant. And we had to explain to the EPA that that had happened locally. They continued to fund us, and we went forward with Form-Based Code for the surrounding areas. But this part of the downtown waterfront was never considered as part of the Form-Based Code project. So the way that this property was going to be reviewed caused it to fall under planned unit development. So that any proposal would have to go through the PUD review process and be sort of decided upon its merits based on that proposal alone and not in the context of a existing code. The first project that I think many people were still have in their mind as what was pitched the first time came from the urban project. And that group did not end up being the ones that developed this property. So there was a subsequent round of application that has brought us to this project. And all of these meetings on this project, and there have been, I can't remember, dozens of them on this, in one way or another, were all public meetings and were properly noticed.
Steve, and I know you've been on the Planning Commission through all of this. The concern I've had, and I think several Commissioners have had, as we've heard many things come up, that, you know, they added fill that they weren't supposed to, and they built higher than they were. Our concern is, did they build what was approved?
Yeah, as far as I can tell, they have. And in fact, many of the amendments, as Dave just pointed out, actually lowered the buildings in a couple of instances.
Okay. And then another question is, does someone actually physically go back then and measure and do a site inspection after construction and verify that they are?
I'm not sure. Maybe, can you answer that?
Because that's, you know, another question that's been posed to me.
Staff just approved, or just reviewed and approved the as-built plans for the Kabagum and Barriga Buildings. And we have not verified those ourselves. And that isn't typical that we go out and do that. We're working with licensed surveyors and engineers who put their reputation on the line that what they put on the paper is accurate. And if it's not, they're going to be in a lot of trouble if we find out it's not. And generally, architects, engineers, surveyors are going to do, going to present exactly what's there in space. We don't, that's not part of our review process.
You know, another question that's come up is, is there a mechanism, whether it's through the Planning Commission or through ordinance, to limit further building heights on the site? Or once the PUD is approved, is it locked down? And maybe you're not prepared to answer that, and that's fine.
Well, my understanding, and I guess I cross-reference this with the planner here too, is that the PUD has been approved. And in essence, that's essentially a contract between the city and the developer, that that's what will be developed. But what you notice on this matrix here is that there have been amendments. And that is, again, a formal request by the developer to come in and have something be changed a little bit. And that involves a public hearing, and it goes through us, and it goes to you because it is, in fact, regulating the zoning ordinance that governs this piece of land. So until it's changed by that process of amendment, this goes.
Commissioner Ryan?
I know one of the other questions that was asked at a previous meeting was the thought that there would be more spacing between some of these buildings. Is that something that's part of the PUD? I'm just asking the questions. Does that come into consideration? Is the location of the buildings on the property?
There are requirements for the yards between the buildings. So much space is required, and that has not, that has not been an issue as far as any changes to that. Those have been followed, those regulations.
And again, I think the issue with what folks may be recollecting is the earlier proposal.
Any other questions? Commissioner De Petro?
Thank you. The next two buildings that are going to be north of the present one being built, are they going to be higher than the one presently being built?
I believe Everett is the building presently being built. Gaines and Adams will be a bit higher, as you can see in those last two columns of the buildings. Gaines being 47 feet at the midpoint of the roof line and having a 59-foot tower, both of those buildings, oh, sorry, 55 feet with a 60-foot nine-inch tower on Gaines and 60-foot six inches with a 60-foot nine-inch tower on Adams. So they are going to be a bit higher.
That's what I was afraid that you were going to say because, actually, when we first started with this, I did not believe anything was going to be higher than the guardrail. And I not knowing.
Please, folks, I'll ask you again.
I not knowing that if I would have seen a drawing of right, Front Street and then where the buildings were, I could have objected, but I would have just been one of the commissioner. So it probably would have passed anyways. But me being a novice at this and not an engineer and surveyor and that, I did not see this coming. But it's in place, so there's really nothing we can do about it, I don't believe, at this time. Quiet, please. There's, I don't believe anything we can really do about the heights. Because the PODs have already been approved for the future.
To mitigate that, we have, at the Planning Commission level, done our best to sort of ensure a four-sided design, which is why you've seen reference to no vinyl siding, and to ensure that the materials that were proposed or were illustrated on the diagrams that came to us were, in fact, the ones that ended up on it. So that the parts of the buildings that you do see from different aspects are somewhat attractive, at least, if not very attractive.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Steve. Dave?
Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. Dave, when you say that we measured
Dave, when you say that we measure to the midpoint of the roof, if a building is 47 feet at the midpoint of the roof, the actual total height of the building is slightly more because you've got half the roof yet above that point, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That could be a large variation in what that is, depending on how high the roof is, bottom to top.
Do you have any other questions? Well, I want to thank you both. Dave, thank you for the presentation. Chairman DeGouche, thanks for coming. There's several Planning Commissioners, both current and former here that came as well, so thank you. In the format that we have, we can't open this up to a question and answer, but if, you know, I know there's a lot of residents here that want to speak, if you want to ask some questions during public comment, that's fine, we'll write those down, we'll write your names down, and we'll try to get you back information if you have questions that remain unanswered, so, thank you. All right, our next item is a presentation on Better Buildings for Michigan program by Natasha Koss, Superior Watershed Partnership Program Manager. Speaking of former Planning Commission members, welcome, Natasha.
Hi, thank you for having me.
You bet.
Did it go away on here?
We'll bring it back.
We're just missing it, the presentation. While he is coming up here, thank you for having me, Natasha Koss, Program Manager at Superior Watershed Partnership. I'm just excited to be here today to introduce the Better Buildings for Michigan program to you. The Watershed Partnership has been helping the city work on this and to get this going. You may recall, we helped you to write a grant in November 2010 to the Department of Energy and Labor and Economic Growth, which is now the Michigan Energy Office, and the city of Marquette was actually one of only a handful of communities, thank you, that was awarded with this funding. And, let me go ahead and do that. And so we're really excited, because this is a chance for the city of Marquette and its residents to find ways to save money and save energy through energy efficiency improvements to their home. So, this is just an overview of what we call the opportunity, and like I said, this is pretty exciting, these are, this is American Recovery and Reinvestment Act money, basically coming back to the homeowners here, and so, what you see here, we get, you get a whole bunch of different things, a home energy assessment, you get energy efficiency upgrades, there's cash match, there's 0% financing, and it's a limited time only, it ends the end of December. Here is the program area for the first part of the sweep. Next year, we'll be doing this in North Marquette, but this year, we're offering the program to all homeowners south of US 41. Oops. Oh, there you go. What you can expect in a home energy assessment, our energy assessor will come into your home, will take a look at all your leaks and cracks, and your, basically, your building footprint. They do what's called a blower door test, and attach that contraption to an exterior door, and basically, what it does is it decreases the indoor air pressure, so they can then take this little wand that has smoke coming off of it, and that they can take that around to all your windows and doors, and it'll show the smoke blowing if there's, in fact, leaks. They're also going to do infrared testing of all of the doors and windows, and it shows there in the blue, that is where you have hot air leaking out. Through this assessment, they're also going to give folks direct energy installments, is what we're calling them. These are 10 CFLs, energy-efficient showerheads and faucet aerators, programmable thermostat, pipe wrap, and a comprehensive safety inspection that hopefully will also uncover any kind of asbestos issues. So who are the energy assessors? For the city, we've contracted with Home Evaluation Services and Michigan Energy Options. Home Evaluation Services is here in Marquette, and Michigan Energy Options is also here in Marquette, but they're a nonprofit based out of Lansing. These folks are certified, Michigan Saves, advanced contractors, they're local, they're professional, these folks have been doing this for many years, doing these kinds of home energy assessments. This is kind of the real meat of the program, and what we're really excited about in terms of just the savings for the homeowners. The direct energy installments will, are valued at almost $175. For homeowners who are interested in going a step further and might be interested in, you know, say, new doors, new windows, insulation, furnaces, that sort of thing, there's an additional $3,000 cash match towards these kind of energy-saving measures. Then there's also a 0% APR financing loan through Michigan Saves. This is a $20,000, up to $20,000 loan for 10 years, and this is all for only a copay of $25. We see this as a great benefit to Marquette, obviously, for all these reasons, and as you can imagine, not only are our contractors who won the bid, not only will they be working on this, but we're also, you know, through all this kind of work, you know, whether it's putting in a new furnace, whatever it may be, we're going to be putting a lot of contractors to work in the city. When it's all said and done with this program, when it ends, we'll have brought over a million dollars into the city, man boosting the local economy, so really excited about that. And as I said before, next year, we'll be implementing the North Marquette sweep, we'll begin designating those boundaries probably sometime in November, December. And you can sign up really easily on marquettebbfm.org, or you can call our office at 228-6095, and I know, right now, Commissioner Stonehouse is our neighborhood champion, or one of our neighborhood champions, who is going to be helping us promote the program, and so we'll probably be starting on his home, hopefully, next week. Okay?
All right. Well, thank you, Natasha.
I made him do it.
This really is a wonderful program. Anyone that's interested, please contact, because there's some real incentives out there, a $3,000 match, if you put $6,000 worth of windows in, you get them for half-price. I mean, it's incredible, so I wish you the best of luck. Your organization continues to be a great partner with the city of Marquette, so thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, item number four, Proclamation, Fire Prevention Week. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, whereas the city of Marquette is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety, a concern both locally and nationally, and homes are where people are at greatest risk to fire, and whereas nearly 3,000 people die each year as a result of home fires, and whereas roughly 2/3 of home fire deaths result, home fires' deaths resulted from home fires in which no smoke alarms or no working smoke alarms were present, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the chance of dying in a reported fire in half, and whereas the Marquette Fire Department recommends at least one smoke alarm on every level of the home, including the basement, outside all sleeping areas, and in all bedrooms, and whereas informing the public about the importance of smoke alarm installation and maintenance serves an essential step toward increasing the public safety from home fires, and whereas the city of Marquette's firefighters are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire deaths and injuries through prevention and proper education, and whereas the 2011 Fire Prevention Week theme, Protect Your Family From Fire, actively works to motivate the city of Marquette's residents to implement smoke alarm recommendations in their homes. Now therefore, I, John B. Keevila, Mayor of the city of Marquette, do hereby proclaim October 9th through 15th, 2011, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city, and I urge all people of Marquette to protect their homes and their families by heeding the potentially life-saving messages of Fire Prevention Week 2011, and to support the many activities and efforts of Marquette's Fire and Emergency Services dated this 11th day of October 2011, and sign, John B. Keevila, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Next up is Boards and Committees, is Yvonne Anderson and John Krokowski here? Okay, if you could meet me at the lectern there? Well, welcome both of you. I have a little gift. These are our two newest board members, the city of Marquette. First, we have Yvonne Anderson, Sustainable Community Ad Hoc Committee, so I've got a pen and a city of Marquette pen for you. And John is the newest member of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, so they're both very important boards. I wish you the best of luck, and I thank you, and the city thanks you for stepping up to the plate and helping out.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, we've got one appointment here, we've got Dottie Lewis, Market Housing Authority, for a term ending 6/14/16. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Ryan?
I would move we appoint Dottie Lewis to the Market Housing Authority for a term ending 6/14/16.
All right, and support, Commissioner Stonehouse?
Second.
Commissioner Ryan, any comments?
As always, we're pleased to have people step forward for these important assignments. In this case, the person has extensive background, which really contributes to this assignment too, so it's especially beneficial for the city.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
It's a natural fit, and I wish her well.
All right, thank you. Dottie has served on this authority several years prior, so she was a wonderful board member, and I'm sure she will continue to do a great job, so. Call the question, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries, and we've got one reappointment, David Allen, Board of Canvassers, for a term ending 12/31/15. Commissioners, Commissioner Stonehouse?
I motion to appoint David Allen to the Board of Canvassers, for Canvassers, for a term ending 12/31/15.
Thank you. Do we have support? Commissioner DePietro? Commissioner Stonehouse, any additional comment?
Again, my thanks for stepping up and helping the city.
Thank you, Commissioner DePietro.
Yeah, and he's enjoyed his last term, so I thank him again for coming aboard. Thank you.
All right, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
opposed? Motion carries. Next up is public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Citizens may reserve time to speak on agenda items. This may result in the item being moved up on the agenda at the mayor's discretion. And I'd ask if you could give your name and physical address for the record as well? Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
My name is Jim Klumpner, I live at 902 High Street. My background's a little different from a lot of people's backgrounds. I grew up in C.R. Meyer &amp; Sons Construction Company. I've been a small-time contractor at times in my life. I also worked for HUD 40 years ago, doing basic research on housing. The study was called, it was an 18-month study, very intensive, we built models, we did all kinds of stuff. It was called Diversity in Form and Space, a study of housing in the United States of America for the Future. It's very hard for me to believe that someone planning a project would not have four different directional pictures of what it would end up with, that you could have seen what was to be built, and the public could have seen what they could have built from the road, for instance, but I'm not yelling at anybody, I'm not talking that, I just want to ask some very basic questions about the city of Marquette, which I have lived in on and off since I was about two years old. The first is, are we really trying to create a retirement community only? If that's what we're trying to do, I think we have said about it in a very strange way. And I think that there have been things happening in the last few years that almost make the city into an anti-child city. I think we should take a good, close look at, at the different facilities that have disappeared or been only money-driven. I'm not talking about, you know, what's, what happened down where we've got the new children's playground, you know, relatively new, and I'm not talking about the children's museum, I'm talking about other things that are going on. The fact that for, that traditionally in this town in the far north, we have had snowbird power far too much in this town, so that people are not obliged to shovel their walk. We compensate by having a little power shoveler that goes on every two or three blocks, but most of the children, if you have driven early in the morning, going to school, are walking down the middle of the road. There are things like this that just seem to miss us. The other thing I was going to say is if we are really trying to get young families here, and businesses here and stuff, I think we should take a good look at our regulations and see why is it that in this county, when you go down to the lakefront and you talk to the businesses down there, they won't come to the meetings. They say they're going to do what they darn well please, and we can't do anything about it, so we might as well just ignore them. The other thing I was wondering was why, when we had HUD come here, what was it, two years ago, they did an intensive study of this place, they had all kinds of meetings, and the first two rules they gave us were, one, take fills as your model, if you want to create a wonderful community that'll bring in people, take fills as your model. Two, do not build a hotel, do not build condos down there. We have done the opposite.
Mr. Klumpner, you're over your time, and we do have another comment, period? All right, thank you. Folks, please, yes.
Hello, my name is Chris Paulus, I live at 425 North 4th Street, Unit 2. I am here to address something pretty much unrelated to about anything we've discussed here tonight, so just allow me one and a half minutes, and I'll be on my way. Occupy Wall Street, most of you know about it, is a growing movement, nonviolent movement about occupying public space, and it's a growing movement all around the country, Boston, Detroit, anywhere in Florida, there's San Francisco, and now it's developing around the world too, Copenhagen, and I think London's on board now too. And now it's extended up here in the UP. We have a little movement called Occupy the UP. We're not planning to occupy any public space yet, but we do have a march planned this Saturday, beginning at Harlow Park at 8:00 AM, and we're going to officially start marching down Washington Street at 10:00, and then we're going to hit up post office, we are going to, through the farmer's market, courthouse, and then we're going to wind up at Wells Fargo. And if most of you don't know what the Occupy Wall Street movement is about, it's generally about the intense power of financial institutions and large banks in our country, namely JP Morgan, Wells Fargo, Citigroup, and, what's the last one? Bank of America. And they've injected a lot of money into our political systems, they lobby so they can push back any push towards legitimate climate change, they bailed themselves out of our economic recession with our taxpayer money, and they're largely responsible for creating a dismal wealth gap in our country. So, if you're on board with that, if you feel like that's something you'd like to protest, again, about 10:00 AM, Harlow Park will begin marching down Washington, so please come join us, we welcome everybody and anybody, and that's what this movement's all about, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Barry Poles in 413 North Front, and I'm a member of the Lanning Development Group, and just wanted to make a few comments about the presentation made earlier. I guess, just to start off with, the decision to build, the scope of buildings down on the Parcel 2 site, or Parcel 1 site, was made many years ago. The master plan that the city paid a lot of money for to develop, went through major, many, many, public hearings. All of you had opportunities to be there, perhaps you were there. That was, went over the course of several years. In 2003, I believe it was, the master plan was adopted. The master plan is on the website, it's been there from when it was adopted, it's on there right now, and you can go there, and you will see three-story residential buildings with the first floor raised off of Lakeshore, the third floor well above Front Street. So this decision was made many years ago. There were many RFP processes, there were three rounds of this, as the city tried to get a developer on board, and the, all three of those RFP rounds had this master plan attached, saying, this is what we want developed. So, we put in RFP twice, the first time we were unsuccessful, Urban Project had won that project, won that round, and they had proposed four-story condos from one end to the other, and I don't know why, certainly there's a lot of confusion over this, but all this is right on the website, all this is in color drawings, you know, it's all there, and so people think of different things, but the drawings have always been there. So, we... So, we presented this, the second time we were awarded the project, we paid $1 million for the site, and we, in our proposal, met the requirements of the master plan, that being high-density residential with three to four stories. We also based our pro forma, how would, how could you actually afford to build this, based upon the density that was allowed? And it worked. Less density, it wouldn't work, we wouldn't have bought the property. The city spent $11 million improving Founder's Landing, and they did not do it to preserve views. Specifically, the master plan had a list of goals and objectives. Nowhere on that list was there anything about views, other than views from Lake Shore to the lake, and that all the land along Lake Shore to the shore would be preserved as public land. And that's exactly what happened. Nowhere does it say anything about public or private views from the west. So, this was not brought up, you know, lots of things were brought up by the public, and they were included in the plan. So, if you brought it up, they didn't hear you, or perhaps you didn't bring it up. The suggestion that we've mucked around, played around with grades and building heights, or didn't show all the views, we did three-dimensional models, we had many, many images, we did presentations with these, you could see all four sides of the buildings, it was never hidden, the exact grade that we have built to today is 630.5, just like it says on those drawings. Maybe you people didn't get a chance to see the drawings, but they've always been available. So, you know, I'm sorry you don't have, you know, you didn't get what you expected, but I must say, I've been up to your properties on the sidewalks and the public areas, on one of your porches, you have a view. Now, whether it's not the same view you have, but you go back a little farther in time, there was a really bad view down there, and many of us who are older with the, in this room, remember that, so. I guess that's good enough, my three minutes probably up, so.
Great. Thank you, Barry. Yeah, you can just go in order, you don't have to raise your hand.
Hi, my name is Margaret Paulus here. I live at 1001 Champion Street in Marquette.
You can pull that mic down a little bit there, ma'am, if you'd like.
Okay, thanks. I think, from what I'm hearing, that yes, the buildings dead, but I'm sorry, I spoke out of turn, it's the towers that are making the big difference, and this is why it's obstructing so many people that have had this view for many, many years. There's Mrs. Inch that has lived on Palm Street for almost all of her life, and now this is, and if it is a problem, then maybe our taxes should be lowered, no lake effect. Thank you, and I'm glad I heard what I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you for coming.
Good evening, Jim Buckholz, 104 Palm Street. Very nice presentation at the beginning of the meeting tonight. I noticed there was many amendments, from 109, 2009 until present, almost. Let's have another amendment. Drop them back down.
Folks, please.
My name's Theo McCracken, I own Dead River Coffee on West Barriga, 119. I talk with citizens of Marquette, I talk with tourists, I talk with hundreds of people a week. I've heard that this is not what we expected, I've heard a commissioner say, is, is this what we, is this what we anticipated? Because I don't, I don't think it is. I've heard, this is, this is what we promised you. What I hear from people mostly is, I don't like this. I hear from tourists, who saw the view of the lake? I hear from tourists, what kind of arrogant people would do this? And I know that this exists because of problems that started back before I came to town in The rules change, the plans change, the people change, you folks are going to be held responsible because it's on your watch that it's done. You can blame a lot of people, but when it comes down to it, this is the commission that put this in place. Whether that's the fact of the matter or not, I don't know what can be done at this point. Maybe we've got to live with this. If we do, the general consensus that I hear is this is a damn shame, and just kind of a travesty that the view of the lake is gone from the highway. What people look at when they come into town now is condominiums and the backs of people's houses.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for having this meeting. I appreciate the informational meeting that we did have tonight. My name is Chris Clemens, 913 Champion Street. I would like to point out, years back, that we had Lakeview Arena filled with people from Marquette, not just Champion Street, not just South Marquette, stating what they wanted to have built down there. We elect these committees to represent us. We, I don't have to go to every planning, planning commission meeting, zoning commission meeting, or city commission meeting to have our point respected. Everybody in this, here tonight, may only be from South Marquette, but we're representing people that live all over, downstate, all over. We do not like this development. I would like to formally request an amendment to the current PUDs and the zoning ordinances that are going on down there. I don't know how we can physically get this done, but I would like to have a halt to any other building that is going on down there. This has been an insult to our community. We came into this as a community, represented by our city, and these people have taken advantage of their knowledge of engineering, zoning, and planned development. We do not want this in Marquette, and I have tons of statements within these documents stating, by the Poleson Development Committee, that incorporate green building designs, practices, including building materials and roof gardens. The building materials in the back of these buildings, I had stated years ago, should not be vinyl. Come on, what do, what do you think I meant by vinyl? I meant looking like vinyl. Your construction board looks like vinyl, sorry. Put that in the front of your buildings, not the back. And also said, green hardwood would be flat and covered in plant green materials. This is a statement in the Mining Journal from a city commission meeting from March 30th, 1909. This is what you sold Marquette, this is what you sold us, and now we have that. So, thanks a lot, and I totally disagree with this development, and these guys should be totally, they have deceived the city of Marquette totally. I don't care about, they should have known about the grades, they should have known about the soil, everybody should have known about everything, and now all of a sudden we are responsible and have to look at this. So, thanks for having this meeting, thanks for listening to our views, and please, can we do something about this? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm at 3001 Lake Shore Boulevard and 104 Palm Street. Quite some time ago, I had suggested to a commissioner, commissioner, that I'm more of a visual person, and that I thought would be a great idea was to put balloons up in the air to let the people see what was coming in the future and what height it would be. And it, when the first phase went in, I was accepting of it, with the two stories, and I thought, you know, that we aren't entitled to the view, but we could share it, at least. And I thought that that height was appropriate, and I know the land needed to be developed. When the Ripley Building went up, there was a crane, and there was a flag on it. I think it was a flag or it was a windsock, and, and it was enormously high, and I was a little shaken, so I've pestered my husband to go down there and find out what that was, and you see if that's the height of the next building. And of course, he promptly went to Mr. Poleson's office and left a message for him to call him, and we, we got no message back. And so, we went down to, and asked, we heard the name Joe Constance, and that he was showing open houses, so we left messages for him to call us about the height, and no response. And then we went back to Mr. Poleson's office again for a second try, and once again, he wasn't there. So, then I had a Realtor friend ask, I asked her if she'd stop in and find out from Mr. Poleson what the height of the building would be, and she said that he wasn't available to her also. She went in to ask about what, you know, and they heard the Buckles' name and knew what it was referring to, she said. So, I just wanted to say that I, it worked what they did. They avoided us, and I guess we just gave up on it, I assumed, you know, I hoped for better, and the worst happened, and I just wanted to say that I wish there was a balloon up or something more dominant to show people what was coming, and then maybe we could have done something before the horse got out of the barn. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Charlene Holman, Palm Street. I wasn't here for the presentation, I had another meeting, so I'm not real sure, I'll find out later. The only thing I want to say is, like they were saying, well, there were trees there, and there were trees, we cleaned it up. Well, trees can come down. The leaves fall off trees, you can see the lake then, but now we have a wall there that isn't going to come down. We're not going to see, unless they do something about the next phase, put it down farther. I'm not begrudging them that they need to make money. They need, they bought the land, and yes, they should be able to develop it, but maybe they can have a little bit of consideration and give a space there, so that people can see at least the break wall. You know, when the next building comes up, that's all gone, everything's gone. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Travis Angustow, 501 Center Street. On a different topic this evening, a little bit related to the children of the area, I would like to commend the commission and the community for being a great place to live. An abbreviated list of awards from the last two years include Top 5 Places to Retire, One of the Top Micropolitans, National Medal for Museum and Library Service, Bicycle Friendly Community, Dozen Distinctive Destinations Fan Favorite, and 10 Best Cities to Raise a Family. With the current bond issue on the ballot for November 8th, Marquette Area Public Schools is asking the community to support the area's future, its children. When Proposal A passed in the state of Michigan in 1994, it changed the tax structure to make the bricks and mortar projects for school districts the community's responsibility. Money from the state is meant for educating the community, money from the community is what's supposed to provide the educational facilities for them, i.e. bricks and mortar. The following are mills, the mills levied by communities for schools throughout the Upper Peninsula. These are 2010 tax rates, these are available on the Michigan Department of Treasury website. Munising Schools, 3.6, Superior Central, 8.1, Berega School, 7.95, Launce, 4.3, Besmer, 4.0, Ironwood, 4.1, Houghton Portage, 8.89, Hancock Public Schools, 11.33, St. Ignis, 5.37, Menominee, 2.6, North Central Schools, 2.9, Ewantraut Creek, 5.7, Antonagon, 3.0, Manisteeck, 4.45, Iron Mountain, 4.2, Norway Vulcan, 7.43, Bridging Township, 4.8, Escanaba, 4.76, Gladstone, 8.56, Our Neighbors, Nice Community Schools, 3.94, Nagani, 3.42, Isfreming, 6.5. These are the millages for the schools, that has nothing else to do with anything in the taxes for the community. Marquette Area Public Schools, 0.95. With the proposed increase of 1.5, 2.45 is still less than the 22 schools that I just read through in this community, and still less than 2.98 mills that they, that they asked for 20 years ago, which is the last time they did something in this community. They've tried not to go back to the taxpayers, and now they have to. They've gone through their general funds, which they shouldn't, that's not what that's for, they're not, it's not for putting the Band-Aids on their, on their buildings, that's for educating the kids. A community this size can support this project. The plan creates stability for the children, up-to-date facilities and technology, savings through energy efficiency, savings through a smaller footprint for the district, long-term stability for the schools, long-term stability for a top 10 best city to raise a family. For more of the bond proposal information, please visit the school's website, mapsnet.org. There's a tax calculator on there that you can find out what, what your millage, what your tax increase would be. The average for each, for each household, not just a taxpayer, for each household, is $62 a year. I think this is something that this community can support. I've got some informational flyers that I'll leave with the commissioners as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hello, my name is Veronica Varney, and I live at 902 Champion Street. I just wanted to say that the, I have been following, although not in great detail, the development, the Founder's Landing development, and have trusted all along that what we were being led to believe would be adhered to, in terms of the buildings down there. I, I would like to reference a Mining Journal article that Mr. Poleson was quoted as, I'll just read it verbatim. Barry Poleson, architect and one of the partners in the group, said one of the most important aspects of the project's design was to maintain as many views to Lake Superior as possible. And further down in the article, it says, even though some parts of the development will be higher, I'm sorry, he said residents enjoy a nice view of the lake while traveling down Fisher Street, and the development incorporates that view corridor with a dedicated public walkway that goes toward the shore. Even though some parts of the development will be higher than the elevation of Front Street, Poleson said residents on Champion Street, Palm Street, and Fisher would be able to retain most of the views of the lake they already enjoy. Quote, "There are a few elements of the buildings that go higher than that, but of course, out of the 180-degree view they have, we're going to take a very, very small percentage, if any," explaining that elements include things like roof gables. I'm sorry, but we were not, we were not given what we anticipated or expected. I'm not an engineer, I do not understand, you know, if somebody tells me the building's going to be 50 feet, but it's not going to obstruct the view, I believe that. We didn't have any pictures, as was pointed out, from the backside on Front Street. We didn't know how high those buildings were going to be. I have a cousin who lives in, in Pensacola, Florida, and she, she's 90, she turned 90 last Friday, and she has tried to come up here over the years because she really loves Marquette, she has, she just loves it here, she loves the lake, she loves white, white birch trees. Anyway, she came up last week and was here for three or four days, and all I told her was that there was some development going on down at the lake shore. And I took her for a ride, and we came down the bypass, and as soon as we went around the roundabout, she said, oh my God, what have they done? Those were her exact words. I would agree with others that if there's something that can be done to stop that mess from proceeding south, it would be a benefit to our community, it would be a benefit to our community. I'm sorry, but... I'm sorry, but the other thing I'd like to say is that that second, when the first building went up, I was a little upset.
Ma'am, you're over already, and we do have another comment period if you want to finish your.
I can't wait that long.
Okay.
The back of that one building is a hot mess.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Hi, my name is Dick Hennessy, I live at 905 Champion Street. I'm a relatively new resident to Marquette, however, my wife's family has lived on Champion Street since 1880. We purchased my mother, or my wife's great-grandfather's house, who we built, which he built in 1908. So I think we have a little bit of a vested interest in the community. I've heard a number of comments about architectural attractiveness, and that's in the eye of the beholder. Quite frankly, I'm not impressed by Poulsen's wall. I've also heard comments from members of the commission that I don't care what they can see from the roundabout. You know, this town sells its appearance. It was you, Fred, that said it at the August meeting, and I was aghast when you said it. I think it was something you said without really thinking, and I, you know, take it at that. This town sells its atmosphere, its beauty. We don't sell the backside of some drive-at building. I share Mrs. Varney's concerns regarding the future development of this. I've served on zoning boards, I've served on boards of zoning appeal, I've served on master plan, and I've served, served as a member of a village, village commission in southern Michigan. I understand how difficult this job is. I understand how difficult the job in the, in building zone board is. In fact, I went in when the first approval was being done and asked to see the plans. And I was told by members of your zoning board that, "Don't worry, we won't obstruct anybody's views." That was inappropriate for them to say, apparently, because they either did it unknowingly or hoping that that would be the case. I would, I understand that there's little that you can do about what has already been approved, other than to watch the appeals or the amendments process very closely. And, you know, I appreciated the honesty about, a member of the commission said he didn't know what they were, what they were going to look like. Let's make sure in the future that we know what things look like. Get all four side elevations, make sure that all of the elevations are as attractive from a visual perspective as the face, or the fronts are. This is, unfortunately, I do not think, an improvement over the old Bum's Jungle, which is what that area was called before.
Folks, please, please try to maintain some decorum in chambers. Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Good evening, you're in Malanquin at Marquette Drive. Double-edged sword on this issue, no matter how you look at it. I've been building homes for the past 35, six years in our community, and perception and reality are sometimes really two different things all the way through. In this particular case, the developers followed the letter of the law really pretty close to what they were approved. Unfortunately, the perception of communication and informing the public somewhere, that was lost, and the people's perception of, of what they heard and what they saw were two different things. And that's really sometimes a difficult position to be for anybody when they're trying to do a project. On the other hand, not all of these people are completely wrong, they heard something different, the rules were completed correctly, but the perception of what was there and what is, what was presented and what actually ended up being were two different things, and those are really difficult things to accomplish. And perhaps a better PR, better communication could perhaps solve some of this with, and I have not looked at all the three-dimensional pictures, but in my case, I show my clients three-dimensional pictures, elevations, retrospect to things that are on the site, roads, other buildings, and so on. And so it gives kind of a perspective where you are at a given time to what there is that is proposed. And perhaps some of that was or was not correctly, or perceived correctly to the public. The rules were followed pretty close to the letter of the law, the perception is where it was lost, and that's unfortunate. Thank you.
Joe Constance, 640 South Lakeshore Boulevard. Fifth generation, I think, Marquette resident from 1865. I played down in Bum's Jungle with a lot of people that are sitting up here, are sitting here right now. We don't take this matter flippantly. I understand if I lived on Champion Street or on Palm Street, I would feel bad too. You know, there's, there's no question about it, it does alter their view. There's a difference between altering and blocking a view. And as far as, I must be from a different planet when I think about all the, the comments I hear about Barry Poulsen's designs, I am damn proud of that development, and that, that's the bottom line. I think that, and, and I don't know about the people that go to the coffee shop, but we get 70 outsiders a week that come through our open houses. And the praises that this city gets for that waterfront development and maintaining the public properties, you know, I understand the changes. For 100 years, the highway was the main view of Lake Superior here. Guess what? We've got a new road. And that new road allows 1,000 cars a day and more to, to get a beautiful lakefront view. It allows thousands of people to use that bike path every day. We were afraid to go down there before when we were kids. Now it's a beautiful area for the public. We're going to have a beautiful hotel there, a beautiful marina, beautiful boardwalk. It's just such a, it's a jewel for the city, and the people from outside of the city certainly appreciate it, and I know a lot of the people from inside the city appreciate it. So I just want to, I, I am proud of it, and if I wasn't, I wouldn't be involved in it. Thank you.
I'm Richard Armstrong, I live at 1013 Champion Street, apartment 3. You know, our, our forefathers left us a real nice lakeshore all along the eastern side, and, and, and the green space is really important. And in the future, it's going to be solid city 20 years from now, from here to Nagani, and green space is going to be very vital. And some of the nicest green space right now is by Lake Superior. We're not going to get an opportunity to keep that. If this sort of thing keeps on, green space is going to be dead. We're going to be like Traverse City, there's going to be no lakeshore. That is a beautiful drive, you are right. I sit and I watch that bike trail, there's easy 50 to 75 people run that bike trail every day. That's green space, we need more. What we get in revenue for tax money for those buildings will never use up, I mean, they'll get used up, and there won't be enough, we'll get, we'll need more. So, that's just my comment. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move to the consent agenda. City Clerk, do you want to read the consent agenda?
Yes, Your Honor. Item A, approve the minutes of the September 26, 2011 Commission Meeting. Item B, approve the total bills payable in the amount of $1,513,472.66. And Item C, award a bid in the amount not to exceed $26,258.45 at the unit prices bid for plow blades, plow shoes, and cutting edges to H&amp;L Masabi of Nagani, Michigan, being the low bid meeting specifications.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Ryan?
I move the consent agenda to be approved.
Thank you. Do we have a support? Commissioner DePietro supports it? Any comments?
No, these are all routine items.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Seeing nothing else, all in favor, say yes.
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 Okay, next item, number seven, under New Business, report and recommendation from the city manager, Clean Michigan Initiatives Non-Point Source Pollution Control Grant Application. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, in August of 2011, the DEQ announced $4 million in available grants to protect, restore, and manage watersheds. The notice of intent, NOI, titled Carp River, Lake Superior Watershed Planning, was submitted in response to the FY12 Non-Point Source Program. The NOI was determined to meet eligibility requirements and is invited to submit a full proposal. The project being recommended is for $224,000. The Carp River watershed consists of 73.5 square miles in the Lake Superior Basin. The watershed is an important environmental, social, and economic asset for three cities, Marquette, Nagani, and Ishboming, six townships, and the Kiwanai Bay Indian Community. The city of Marquette, in cooperation with the SWP and other project partners, will facilitate, facilitate an intergovernmental planning project to identify and prioritize non-point source water quality impacts, stormwater, sedimentation, et cetera, and recommend collaborative actions to remediate these impacts, prioritize areas for future conservation and development, and promote multi-jurisdictional watershed planning, watershed-based planning and zoning. The project will result in an approvable watershed management plan that will provide a basis for watershed restoration and protection. The watershed includes 303 D-listed waters, including Carp Creek from Ishboming, Ishboming to Deer Lake, and is in the FY12 targeted water body. This work will also complement the delisting of beneficial use impairments in the AOC. The grant is a two-year grant that will be administered by the city of Marquette. Fiscal effect, in order to apply for the grant, a local match of $40,000 is required to be included in the grant application of the local match. The SWP will, is committing $20,000, with the balance being recommended to come from the city in the form of in-kind services. Should the city receive the grant, in the in, grant, the in-kind city match will be realized during the FY12-13 budget year. Recommendation, approve the city's application for a Clean Michigan Initiatives Non-Point Source Pollution Control Grant, and authorize the city manager to sign the application, alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Ryan?
I'd like to move, we approve the city's application for a Clean Michigan Initiative North Non-Point Source Pollution Control Grant, and authorize the city manager to sign the grant application.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Schneider?
Support.
Commissioner Ryan?
I think we always have to be concerned about how we're impacting this very special body of water that we all think so highly of. This is an, an opportunity to really partner with the Superior Watershed Partnership, which is, which has been a very strong partner in our community, and an opportunity to get some grant money that, that will allow us to look at those things that, that can and are impacting the water and, and the pollution flowing into Lake Superior. So I think it's, it's well worth our investment of $20,000.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
No, I concur quite a bit with what Commissioner Ryan had said. I think it looks like a great project, and see no problems in putting forward a grant application.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Just a question, I think, for staff. I noticed within the preparation document, it mentioned cities of Ishboming, Nagani, as well as six other townships that are within the watershed, and theoretically would be benefiting from the project. Has any discussion been ongoing with, with these other municipalities towards participating and assisting with the grant?
Mr. Goodman?
Good afternoon. Yeah, I could answer that. In preparation of the, the grant application, we have contacted the other municipalities and townships. We are, they are going to be providing letter of support. In addition, as we get to the final grant application, in-kind services will be offered by those other communities. They're fully backing, supporting this project.
All right, thank you. Anything further, Commissioner Stonehouse? Commissioner St. Ang?
Thank you, Your Honor. Maybe Kurt, maybe you can educate me a little bit. How much of the watershed actually resides within the city limits? We don't, we weren't afforded a map, it was, it's always nice to be able to see it. I'm not that privy to the extent of the Carp River watershed. Commissioner Stonehouse asked to think of a very pertinent question. I don't think that the taxpayers of the city of Marquette should bear this on our own, even, even if the argument is that it's in-kind services. $20,000 is still $20,000. But how much of this, how much of the city actually resides within the watershed?
I would, that's, sorry about not providing that map. More than probably two-thirds of it, and a lot of it is in Hartwood Forest property. An area of concern that we're going to be partnering with will be part of the Deer Lake. It all affects the watershed that goes through Marquette and Marquette Township.
I, I guess I understand it, but you just made a statement that I, somewhat contradictory, I think. Most of the Hartwood Forest does not sit in the city of Marquette. So, again, from the standpoint of the existing city, how much is it roughly resides within the city limits of the city of Marquette? I mean, is it, is it roughly, give me, give me a general area of what, where it bounds? Is it the golf course?
Down by the wastewater treatment plant where it outlets up towards to, I would say, the other side of 553.
And then how far to the north? I'm assuming that the golf course might be in that watershed as well? Or is that sitting in a different watershed?
I don't have that information right this second. I could forward it to you.
Again, I, you know, I guess I, I can presume that the comments just made with regard to other municipalities sharing in this cost are sincere, and, again, because we don't have agreements in place, how do we know if that's ever going to happen? I know the argument will be that in order for this to actually be affected, it'll have to come back in front of the commission, whoever's sitting here in fiscal year 2012, 2013. But again, at the end of the day, we have to be cognizant of how much money we're spending on what projects, and prioritize those that have the greatest impact. And granted, we will benefit from this study, I'm sure of that, but to the extent that we are covering half of this cost, I think is certainly unfair to taxpayers. So, at the end of the day, I hope that this project, as it comes to fruition, is truly shared by the other municipalities. I don't mean to be so parochial, but we all have to participate. That's how these deals get sold to us. Those are the commitments that are typically made to this commission, and any commission who's sitting here over the years, and the future commissions. And there's no way of really knowing, at the end of the day, whether those agreements actually come to fruition. So, I'll take you at your word. I hope it's done the right way, but it's, we still spent a lot, a lot of money here. Thank you.
One thing if I could add is, one thing this plan does, a similar, similar plan was done with the Whetstone and Oriental Watershed Management Plan. Through this project plan, we're able to use the plan to do future projects with additional funding. So really, that's the, this is sort of the first step into securing additional large-dollar grant funding.
Thank you. Any other questions for Kurt? Commissioner Neme?
This is in fact for Kurt, this is more for the city manager, but would this cooperative effort count under the Economic Vitality Incentive Program with the state for revenue sharing?
Absolutely. It'd be another example of inter-local coordination.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, you know, critical, I guess, following on the manager's comment, it therefore is incumbent that the other townships and municipalities fully participate within the program and do so in a very public manner. And I, I hope that, you know, our discussion tonight will help engender that movement.
Commissioner Ryan?
Not to turn this into a debate, but I think it's important to point out that we are the recipient of all of it, regardless of where it begins. It all winds up in Marquette or in Lake Superior. So it's critically important to us that we get on board to deal with this issue, because it all comes to Marquette. And, and I, you know, I think that's just very important, and basically, we're paying 10% of the cost of this project. So, I think it's important.
All right. I will call a question, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, number eight, report and recommendation from the city manager. M dot contract for the 553 non-motorized. MDOT contract for the 553 non-motorized pathway extension project. City clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background: MDOT has secured funding through the U.S. Department of Transportation, Transportation Enhancement Activity Surface Transportation Program for the construction of a non-motorized pathway on the west side of McClellan Avenue between Grove Street and Vista Anna Drive within the state-owned right-of-way. The grant provided funding for up to $147,100 of the total project costs. In addition, MDOT requested and the city commission approved matching resources for the project in the form of in-kind and cash contributions, which were included in the FY-12 budget. Plans were developed by the city engineering department for the project, and the planning commission voted to support the project on December 7, 2010. In addition, MDOT held a public forum for the community on June 29, 2011, just to solicit input from the community regarding all aspects of the project implementation. Concerns stated by four residents in attendance were primarily related to the future of the four-way stop at the intersection of Grove Street and McClellan Avenue and the removal of trees near the proposed construction site. MDOT stated that the project is separate and unrelated from the four-way stop control study. Further, MDOT modified plans to address unnecessary tree removal, as well as incorporating additional field adjustments to be addressed during construction activities. Fiscal effect: the budget for this project includes $117,700 in federal aid, $18,500 in matching funds from MDOT, and city contributions of $10,900 respectively per the approved budget for fiscal year 1112. Authorized city contributions may not exceed $15,000. Once completed, the city will take ownership of the pathway and assume responsibility for all future maintenance. Recommendation by resolution: authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the contract with MDOT for M553 non-motorized pathway extension project from Vista Anna Drive to Grove Street. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I will motion by resolution to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the contract with the Michigan Department of Transportation for the M553 non-motorized pathway extension project from Vista Anna Drive to Grove Street.
All right, do we have support? Commissioner Neme?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Project's been discussed before. It certainly is a benefit to the city. It does add an additional element of safety for the folks along that stretch of 553 and really McClellan Avenue. It's a good thing for us.
All right. Commissioner Neme? Anything to add?
That'll be a nice addition to our trail system.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're through our agenda. Next up is public comment. Comments should be limited to five minutes per person. And again, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Angela Dufay. I live at 902 Division Street, actually the corner of Division and Newberry. I live above where you would look over the lake, so this really doesn't impact me. Yes, it does. I live in Marquette. I'm living in this town because it's beautiful. It's a great place to raise kids. But now, suddenly, I'm looking at houses. I go for my daily walks, and I'm seeing this atrocity being built up. It's like having a giant wart on our lakeshore. And it's just, really, do we really want this to be what advertises us as people coming through our town, going through the roundabout and seeing, oh, a building? And they'll keep driving. Why stop? Why do we go down to the lake? Well, we're just passing through. There's nothing down there. There's just a bunch of houses. We're just going to keep passing. So, why are we letting the arrogance of two guys that couldn't stay for the whole mating dictate what we're going to see for the rest of our lives? That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Dick Canese, 905 Champion Street. I didn't have enough time before to address all the issues, but, you know, I think that it's painfully obvious that your planning board and your approval process was adhered to, was complied with, and the economic interests of the builders are to maximize their gain, their profit. That said, you know, the city, that was your property, our property, to be developed. And I would ask you to adopt or clear guidelines or ordinances with regard to height restrictions on lakefront property. The developer mentioned things like density and economic gains. That's not the, you know, the planning commissioner, the board, the building people purvey. They shouldn't care about the profitability of the developer. In this case, I think the city had a project that they wanted to see done because they had an economic interest in that project, and perhaps not enough inquiry was made. I'm not faulting what was done. I am faulting what happened, what turned out from it, and I would hope that any future developments would be more carefully studied than this one was. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't attacking anybody. I just wanted to clarify a little bit about this thing, since we had a booster talking about how wonderful the city is.
Mr. Klumner, if you could just state your name and address again?
Jim Klumner, 902 High.
Thank you.
In town. There was a movement to shut down the ice rinks last winter. A couple of the small parks have been closed, or they're being developed. There's other stuff going on. This incredible fight over the skateboard, the skateboarding, you know, in Harlow Park, where the Legion opposed it, where the Legion should have been behind it. There are things like this. When I was a child, they shut down one of the steepest streets in town for kids to sled on. This is all I'm saying, is that one of my fears, when my children were walking to school and we couldn't drive them, was that some kid was going to get hit on that street whose father and mother were lawyers or doctors, and the city would have its pants sued off because the kids had to walk on the street because the sidewalks are not plowed. So, I think there's two things here. As one of my friends told me, we should nurture our kids because they aren't going to stay with us here all that time. We would hope that they would have opportunities to live here and to develop this place and to move on, but I think we need to attract young families. When you attract snowbirds, and only snowbirds, they demand more services and they want no taxes. I know, I'm of the age. I'm 76 years old. I know how they think. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we will move to commissioner comments. Start to my left, Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't really have a lot of comments, just one brief one. We've heard in the news about the potential power plant closing at some point in the future, and that's going to have a significant effect on the city. And I would hope that sometime in the future, we'll have a discussion on that. I know the city manager's on top of the issue and is investigating it, and I think we, as a commission, need to look at that because it significantly affects our finances, affects the schools, county. It will affect the potential upcoming bond issue of the school that they won't generate the money they planned and would have to levy additional millage, slightly additional millage anyway, but I would hope that in the future, we have some sort of discussion on that as more information is developed.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
Well, there was definitely a lot of information and process around this issue. For me, just coming onto the commission within the last year, it's been really educational, at least understanding how things have gone, where the process has taken us, what decisions were made, and it does seem like the developers have actually followed everything that they've agreed to from the beginning, and it seems like there was still a lot of miscommunication somehow in the process. This is frustrating to me, and I think a lot of it has to do with our citizens' understanding of how they can get involved, be engaged, access information, and it's something that I hope that we, as a city, can address in the future, and I hope that it's something that our citizens can address more in the future. We have a number of boards and committees. We have a city commission. We have a number of ways that citizens can get involved in the community and learn more about the processes of what's going on, and we still end up with vacancies. We still end up with very few people showing a strong interest in getting involved civically in our community, and I think this is a really good example of what happens when we don't have that civic engagement. So I definitely encourage the citizens to start understanding how they can become more engaged, as well as my fellow commissioners and city staff to find innovative ways to engage citizens in the future. One of the issues that has come up as well, maybe we can amend the current plan. I don't know if that's a possibility, but I would like the city manager to address to citizens interested in pursuing that, what their process might be if they wanted to try and amend that in the future. I'm wearing this bright orange shirt, and I wanted to say thank you to our Waterfront Safety Task Force, putting together a really great plan for us. This last week, a number of commissioners and city staff went down to Grand Rapids for the Michigan Municipal League, and part of that conference, there was a competition between some municipalities who had some really cool projects that they had going to, I guess, to better their community. Personally, I think we had a great, great thing saving lives in Marquette, particularly the process that came about and the outcome. And so, we all had these bright orange pumpkin shirts that we wore to try and support our concept, but unfortunately, we lost out to a fat cop and a leotard who were talking about donuts. They've got a cool project. It was a private enterprise. Just shows what happens in a popularity contest, but I really do want to thank our Waterfront Safety Task Force. They've done a really great job. So thank you, guys, and that's it.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Stenaj?
Nothing to add, thanks.
Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just recognized some anniversaries with the city employees, and that'll be October 4th. Stacy Stone had her first year in customer, calling clerk, and cashier. October 26th, Tom Peleman will have 30 years at the Lake Purina as their Samboni driver. October 30th, Dennis Stackowitz, who is director of planning and community development, will have five years. In October 31st, Duane Sukal, who is the city motor pool equipment, maintenance, and mechanic repairman, will have five years. I'd also like to commend all of our departments and city employees who had worked around the clock during Thursday, September 29th, windstorm that was clocked at 69 miles per hour, that toppled trees, cross roadways, secured areas that don't, live electrical wires, cross roads, flooding, and those working traffic control during power outages. Again, we thank all of the city departments and all employees for their quick response during this weather-related emergency with a job well done. And last Saturday, October 8th, from 11:00 a.m. till 12:30 p.m., the Market City Fire Department held their 19th Annual Fire Prevention Week kickoff parade on West Bluff Street at Harlow Park with over 35 fire trucks, firefighters, EMTs, paramedics, and rescue vehicles from throughout Market County. All children and adults had a chance to fuel all the emergency equipment up close, followed by drawings for young children, which included saving bonds and bicycles. And fun was had by all with the beautiful weather. Again, we thank all of the fire department personnel from throughout Market County for participating with this event. And at this time, I'd like to have the city manager, Bill Fida, when it's a city manager's comment time, to announce his next public community hours, location, time, and date. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
First of all, I would like to, as Commissioner DePietro mentioned, thank those emergency workers, those city workers, borderline power workers, and other workers who did come forth in that emergency and really put in a tremendous amount of effort. Meetings like tonight are always interesting. I was going to say fun, but maybe fun's not the right word, but they're certainly interesting, and I enjoy them. They remind me of the old town hall meetings where people come out and tell us what's on their mind, and I think that's a good thing. The unfortunate thing is, if you try to hold a town hall meeting and get people to come out and tell you what's on their mind, nobody shows up, but when you have an issue, people do tend to come out, and that's a good thing. I think we heard a lot tonight. I guess I'd like to think about it, and we have a lot to think about, so that's the most I want to say about it tonight. I did want to mention, too, I want to congratulate city staff for their efforts in getting the $20,000 grant for the park in Chyrus Hills. I think that's outstanding. The other thing is, I was walking, and this is a couple of weeks ago, I was walking through Matson Park, and just marvel at the job that, I'm not sure who's in charge of keeping that place in order, but when you can have that many festivals at a park and still have green grass and still have it looking the way it does, some people on the city staff deserve a lot of credit for that, and I certainly, for one, have taken notice. And I think it's also a time when I'd like to, again, remind people that it's called Matson Park because of a guy called Elwood Matson. You know, in this town, and I've mentioned this before, you know, we have, people think Peter White is a library, and Chyrus is a park, and, you know, Harlow is a park, and Graverett is an auditorium. These are actually people, you know, they're people who contributed to our community, and certainly Elwood Matson was one of those people, too, and that park was fittingly named in his honor, and it's just another great summer that we've had to enjoy that park here in Marquette. And I think the presentation by Natasha Cost tonight, as the mayor said, this is important. I think it's really more than important. Hopefully, tell your neighbors about it. Tell your friends about it. This is an opportunity, you know, to get some free energy savings and to get some public grants that can really help people, so I hope they'll call Natasha or whoever they have to call to take advantage of that. Tell your friends and neighbors out in South Marquette as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Certainly, as Commissioner Ryan said, a very interesting meeting and a good meeting. Lots of great public input, lots of things to think about. But one of the big issues, I think, that has come out of it is that the very clear understanding that we, as a commission, rely very heavily on public hearings to sense what the broad swatch of the public is thinking, what they want, what they want to do, how they feel about topics and objects and decisions that come up. And it's a little frustrating, and I know it's difficult. I know it's arduous. I know there's a lot of them, and they keep going on, and it takes a real commitment to stay involved and to understand everything that's happening. But that's democracy, and you have to participate in it if you're going to be able to try and influence the decisions that come out of those meetings. And it's very difficult to come in, in effect, in this instance, when decisions are largely already made, although certainly we can look at alternatives, because that was a long process we went through, and it went on for years. And we can, again, it's just, we really depend on those public hearings to be able to understand what the people are thinking of. And a good example would be, you know, we had a public hearing tonight on the helmet law for moped, and obviously, there's issues on both sides of that. I mean, there's a considerable movement in the state of Michigan that says, get rid of all motorcycle helmets, and yet, we didn't have a single person at the public hearing tonight talk about that, either pro or con. And it was well-publicized in the papers. I mean, there was no lack of knowledge that this was ongoing. So, again, in this city, and certainly in any community, participation and being energetic in that participation is just really, really vital, because that's how democracy works. You can't depend on the papers or the news media for your sole source of information. They're a great beginning, and it's there, but you've really got to go out and find out what the truth of the matter may be on your own, and we all know that. I mean, that's not any great revelation. Yeah, the Building Better Michigan Program, I'm a neighborhood champion of that. That means that I've agreed to have my house looked at. Please, I'm not getting any special treatment or favors from that, but, and like Commissioner Ryan, I am encouraging everybody to get out in South Marquette this year, take advantage of it. It's a great opportunity, and next year, it'll be North Marquette, and we'll cover that one, too. that one too. Two questions for staff. Does anyone have any knowledge of any park we have ever closed or sold or plans to get rid of? I think that came up in public hearing tonight or public comment. I'm, I'm certainly not aware of that. I would remind too our citizens that we own virtually 95%, perhaps a little bit less of our lakeshore. And I know of absolutely no plans, perhaps staff does, to ever sell any portion of that lakeshore. You know, we certainly hold on to that, I think, as a very precious commodity. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Just a few random comments. I'll dovetail on the Building Better Michigan. That really is as good as it sounds. It's not like inviting a vacuum salesman into your house. There's really no strings attached. You sign up, they will come and do those things for you and they will recommend maybe some things you can do. And again, if you want to do some of those, there's matching money to do it. We're very fortunate to be a community selected for that. So I really would encourage any and everyone to sign up. I would hate to see that money go unspent. Commending, you know, certainly BLP and public works officials for the work during the, the windstorm is great. I've gotten a lot of comments asking or questions and a couple of emails questioning why we haven't picked up all the branches around town. And the answer is simply, our brush pickup is a couple of weeks away. And so, the crews went around and picked up anything that was dangerous or in the way or blocking, you know, views or obstructing, you know, sidewalks. But other than that, the intention is to do it all at one time during our normal annual brush pickup, which is coming up in a couple of weeks. And then, last but not least, on the award that we tried to win down in Grand Rapids, there, there were seven different communities that entered projects. And I will tell you, I'm maybe a little biased, but ours was certainly without question the best. But it, it does become a popularity contest. The city manager and I were talking about this a week before we left. And, and he said, we'll be winners if one community comes to us and says, we want to copy what you're doing. And I said, BS, we're going to win it. Incidentally, we had six communities come to us and say, we're struggling with these same things. Can we copy what you're doing? Can we get a copy of your plan? And we certainly forward that information, as well as the state of Michigan's Parks and Rec Department using our program now as a model around the state. So, very, very proud of the work that the crew did. And just want to say a special thank you to Eric Smith from Northern Michigan University who served on that task force that made the trip to Grand Rapids with us to help promote and explain the program. So, true, uh, community guy, Eric is in, of course, Northern for giving them the time off to do that. So, that's all I have. City manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. On behalf of staff, for the entire commission, we thank you for your kind comments. We certainly are working very hard to make sure that we're providing the best level of services that we can to the community. Also, specifically for Commissioner DePietro, tomorrow, October 12th, at the community conference room in Peter White Public Library, we'll be having our next community office hours. And we would encourage anybody for any subject to come in and have a chat and tell us what they think about the city, what's going on, suggestions to improve services, make life better, or anything else that you'd like to chat about. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. With that, we're adjourned.